In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. We're gonna have a hearing first. So we're gonna open this hearing right now at 6 o'clock. And it's for the loan energy upgrades and improvements.
So Phil Kipnis is here, that he has a short PowerPoint, you would like for him to do that now? So that the public can hear what it's about.
I have faith in you.
I don't.
Let's see. Brenda broke it.
I know. It's what I do best.
Should be fine. See what I mean? Okay. I'll thank you everybody. I thought I would start the presentation with a reminder, because this study has been going on for over a year, that Siemens, as a result of a state RFP, was awarded a contract to perform water conservation and energy conservation services. The legislation that the state passed allows us to finance infrastructure improvements, as long as the increase in revenues or cost savings from the project pay for the debt service on the project. And, which is logical, that we guarantee the efficiencies of the project at the same time. So that's where we started, and then we started what's called the investment-grade audit of your water system, water distribution system, all the way from the wells to the meters. To answer some pretty basic questions. One, why are we taking so much water out of the ground than we're actually accounting for and invoicing in the central water department? A simple question, not necessarily a simple answer. The second very important question is, can, if we could capture the water that's being pumped into the meters, will the increase in revenue from that pay for the project itself? It's a big part of the audit. And then, as a corollary to that, how inefficient are the existing meters? And you had to pull seventy or so meters and test them independently as part of the study. And then look at your energy systems and how you're being billed by the utility and see where you can save the most money? What upgrades make the most sense to you? I'm gonna start with the conclusions and then go back into the audit. So what will the project include? First, a sonic leak detection of the entire water distribution system. I think it's pretty well known that there's a number of leaks, and most of them or many of them suffer from the problem of the water going down and not surfacing and being hard to find. So, we worked with Laura, of course, with Mark Teshama and with Jacobs to come up with a plan so that when we're doing this fairly elaborate sonic testing of the distribution system, we're going to, we're going to be able to locate leaks. And then, between Siemens and the city and Jacobs, fix as many of them as we can during the process. Far more efficient than doing it slowly over time. You think that that will save the city a lot of money and also result in less pumping of water. New water meters throughout. Everybody gets a new meter, all the businesses, all the homes. They're all digital, non-moving-part meters. They're state-of-the-art. They're guaranteed a 98.5% efficiency for over fifteen years. They will transmit the meter readings to us, a load tower, by sound wave. And this is called an AMI/AMR system. From the tower, right here to this building, where invoices can be produced automatically. So that's going to save money and be more accurate. You won't need as many hours reading meters, so those people doing that can hopefully give other meaningful things for the city. LED lighting in the buildings, new plumbing fixtures, which are high-efficiency, low-flow fixtures. The study also produced engineering detail and a roadmap for the city to replace its streetlights with LEDs. It may be more efficient for the city to do that on its own over time, but the study produced the type of fixtures and the type of savings that you'll get from doing it. Project cost came out to $4.9 million. So, so you know what we're gonna do, back to the basic parts of the study. We don't have a GPS map of the distribution system. I know Laura's leading the charge to produce one, and we're gonna be helping with that process. We're dealing with the aging water meter infrastructure. A lot of the meters are in wells, where we can't even get to them. And you can't replace them when you need to without a lot of labor. So wherever it's needed, we're actually gonna be fixing the water wells, digging them up and replacing with new ones, including lids. Some of them we don't have access to. We're dealing with the high cost of reading meters, because it's manual and it pits like that. Especially on the commercial side, but really all throughout, just some photos of things that we've seen. For me, in places that are easy and modernized, and check for leaks. Want to improve or tackle the high cost of invoicing, which is all manual today. Reduce the customer calls, which lead to, you know, very time-consuming resolutions. People have to read the meter readings, they... And it's very hard to prove out whether the amount of water their building is really what they need or not. This will eliminate that problem. And I think the last one's really important. It's certainly a third-party repair and even replacement of the meters one by one. Seventeen, we tested their efficiency, and they were only on average eighty-seven and a half percent efficient, which is very low. We weren't even able to remove the worst meters, because they were so hard to get to. So we think that when the whole project is done, it's gonna turn out their efficiency was even worse and so improving is even better. When you take the new meters at 98.5% efficiency, it appears that the water and sewer revenues that you're being shorted is about $328,000 a year. And we're guaranteeing the efficiency of the new meters. So... Now wait a minute. Sure. You're guaranteeing the new meters. I'm guaranteeing the efficiency of the new meters. Do you know how hard our water is getting? Yes. And you're gonna get okay. Thank you, and thank you for mentioning that, because that actually was a, you know, we can't go over everything in a year-long study, but we... I mean, it eats, the water here eats water softeners, it eats bikes, baby, it eats everything. I'm not even sure five years ago we could have done the project in the same way. These are non-moving-part self-cleaning tubes. You're guaranteeing them, baby, I'm all about this. We're guaranteeing. And so what happens is, every year, during the life of the financing, that's fifteen years. We've been in business for 171 years. We go and we pull a random number of meters, we send them to a third-party lab. They're not 98% efficient, we're responsible for it. See, my question is, at your lab, though, you're not using grass water. You're using some other water that doesn't have the minerals and all the stuff that we have here. That's why our water tastes so good here, it's rainbow, okay? I mean... What we're saying is that you, after you see the meter with a non-moving-part sonic water meter, is independent of the mineral content of the water. You bet, I can't wait to see this. Yeah, you're gonna like it. I've got, and I've got a sample meter in the park, I think I stood it. So, interesting question. And then, on the operations side, Laura was always encouraging me to be conservative, but in terms of not having to read the meters manually, not having to do the invoicing manually, we'll, we'd take $50,000 in operations and maintenance savings. We hope, you know, we expect it to be a lot more than that. We also have LED lighting. LED lighting, which is gonna save about $15,000 a year, plus a rebate. And Mr. Lucero will help with that, $15,000. Over the financing life of the project, we're projected for you to yield a positive cash flow. So it covers all the costs of about $1.4 million. I think beyond that, we like to look at... But that's over the life of the... That's over the life. And I think at that point, there's, no, that's the life of the project. The meters, you know, we hope to last longer. And all the infrastructure work is gonna last much longer. So what we like to see is the legacy cash flow beyond the project. And I think that's always a very important thing, because at that point, everything is... So that's the, that's the high view of where we landed. New Mexico Finance Authority was very happy with the project. Then we passed our own committee, barely sure order. And we had a few more groups to jump through, but we're basically... Any other questions? Comments from the public on this? We're fixing to move on this tonight. Anybody out there in the public got any comment on this? Anybody up here? Sidney? Manny?
Thank you for the information.
Fred? Laura? You got anything on this? I'm all about this, it's item seven and eight on the agenda. If nobody has any questions, then we're gonna go ahead and we'll call this meeting to order now at 6:12 PM. Roll call.
Mayor Hicks?
Present.
Councilor Reynolds?
Here.
Councilor Vazquez?
Here.
Councilor Padilla?
Here.
Councilor Lucero?
Let the record show that Councilor Lucero has a flu tonight.
He's working on the meters.
He's working on the meters. We've seen how it's flowed, he's got, okay. Will you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Of flag, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, unregime, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Approval of the agenda. As good as it is, because we're not changing nothing on it.
I'm looking to approve the agenda for Monday, December 17, 2018.
Second. Councilor Vazquez?
Yes.
Councilor Padilla?
Yes.
Mr. Geraldo Hava?
Yeah.
Geraldo, come on up to the mic. This is Juan Geraldo, and he wants to address us about 808 Guys Street.
Yes, my name is Juan, and I live on 808 Guys. And my problem is that I have, I always had a leak on the street for a few years already. And I'd just like to know what's gonna be done.
So, we pulled the records to see where the leaks were, and at your address, it shows three leaks. One was in 2017. It was a meter can leak. And then the other was December 1 of this year, and then December 10. Today, Edward called me and said that we had another leak, so we went by and looked at it. And then I asked Edward if he would please call you and let you know that we were aware, so you didn't have to call us. But, we, what we do, what we've been doing the last few years is where we're seeing several leaks, not just one or two. We're putting it on the list to replace the pipes. And so, there's been a bunch on Adams, which runs perpendicular to your street. So that area right there, we've got on the list. Prior to your area, some areas that I have noted that we've had probably six or seven leaks is Leach Street, Washington Street, and El Capitan Loop. Then I have yours next, Guys, Adams. So we'll try to start working to just totally replace those lines.
And this thing that we're doing with you is gonna help us take care of a lot of this, right? Sure. That sounds great. Anything else, Juan?
Yes, another thing, my driveway has been broken, you know, since the water's been staying there for a long time. And I'd like to know if it's gonna be fixed.
So with that, what you'll need to do is fill out a tort claim. You'll have to fill out a tort claim form, and it will go to the insurance company. I suspect that they're gonna deny the claim, we can see what happens, but according to this, with two leaks in the last week or two, I don't know that they're gonna claim that that's what's cracked your driveway.
Yeah, but the water has been sitting there. Yeah, it's been sitting there for, I mean, this land does just this year, that year.
Here's what I want you to do, Juan. Come down here, fill out the tort claim. Once you fill out the tort claim, we'll take care of it.
Okay, to the city hall?
Yeah, come down here. Brenda, somebody will help you with your tort claim. Come down here tomorrow morning, get that done, and then, like she said, they're gonna deny it, and then we'll take care of it.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, actually, we can't take care of it. It has to be up to the insurance.
Yeah.
Well, you know, the thing is on that, you have this problem, you have this problem for many years, okay? The water has been deteriorating your concrete. What it's done is actually pull the water, and it's slick. And it's caving down underneath the concrete, and you have to drive up your driveway. It's gonna crack, and that's our responsibility, to fix your concrete.
And if you notice, I mean, I don't know if you have noticed, but my fence is right next to the sidewalk, and I've always seen a couple cracks. It's gonna keep going if it's not fixed, you know, soon. See, the problem there is a lower area in the water just sits there.
Right, it's a normal area that pools because the drains come first street towards your home. Have you had other leaks besides the ones I listed that happened?
They're always been there, you know, like I said, from the past years, and it's just been getting worse.
Come down.
Tomorrow morning?
Fill out the tort claim, and we'll take you from there, we'll go from there.
Okay.
We'll see what we can do out there.
Thank you.
That's it, he's the only one to address, so we'll move on to discussion and action items. Public comment on discussion of the charter compliance? Anybody out there wanna tell us we're not in compliance? Okay, we're not in compliance, okay? Approval of the regular city council meeting minutes? If you guys look at that first page, the computer's got a glitch. Put the approval of the agenda about four times down there. Okay, so that needs to be fixed in the glitch, now that we know it's there. Brenda and Laura will take care of that very soon. That's the only correction I seen. And on that note, I'll entertain a...
I have a question.
Go ahead.
To Jimmy. And the eleven item, we approved Joel Martinez and Norina F. Torres to the senior advisory board. We approved Joel Martinez, and then we approved Nora Torres, then we approved Joel Martinez again.
Yeah, that's that same, that's the same glitch there.
Okay.
Brenda? Okay, so that's two corrections now.
Got it.
I didn't catch that one. You go there, buddy.
I think we're gonna do it.
You go, man. Anything else? Okay, so, I'll move to approve the minutes with those two corrections.
I make a motion to approve the meeting. I mean, it's not...
Second.
Second.
Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilor Vazquez? Councilor Padilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Next. USDA funding availability month schedule. Wilson's coming to Dallas early.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Merry Christmas, by the way. I hope you enjoy the holidays and enjoy your families. I'm gonna give you a little bit of background to set the stage. And I'm gonna turn off the lights so that you can see this schedule. You've got a bit of a, more of an engineering schedule, I think, in your packets. And so we really wanted to simplify that particular schedule. The timelines will be the same, but hopefully you'll find this one is much easier to read. So to give you a little bit of history, early in 2018, staff, we had Mark and Don that were very interested in making sure that we continue on some of the capital projects, not only in 2018, but in 2019. And through that discussion, one of the items that quickly rose to the top is this idea, this need by the state and the feds of an asset management plan. So as a result of that work on the asset management plan, very quickly, staff, I know the city manager, we met with her and mayor as well. You know, there's a lot of concern, just like we've heard tonight, about water lines are leaking, sewer lines are getting plugged. And one of the questions was, you know, is asset management going to address that? The answer is, it is. So we are GPSing all of your lines, all of your lift stations, all of your reservoirs, your storage tanks, that sort of thing, and putting together, we call the schema, the water supply and sewer system for the entire city. And through that process, through that state process that we followed, we began to identify the criticality factors of your infrastructure, the material type, the age, the condition. We began to develop a ranking, if you will, and a cost to do that over time. But staff has made it very well aware to us that there's a concern that in the near future, the number of water line breaks and issues with sewer, that those are starting, the cost of maintaining those every year, maybe, right? Maybe, at this point it's hypothetical, more than if we did capital improvements over the long term, that you might have some savings, just like we heard earlier with the water. So we're going through that exercise to be able to determine, to technically justify that. As part of that process, that led to the conversation of, okay, so once we do the asset management plan, is that, not only does it help us with the mandate of the state when we go and apply for funding, right? It's a mandate. But it will also start to trigger some future activities that could lead to replacement of infrastructure. So this is where we are today. We're gonna talk about, okay, what comes after the asset management plan and what is USDA? I hope that, a little more tangible. So we've got a timeline on the top. You see 2018 on the far left, our schedule spans through 2020. And it really starts with the work on the asset management plan. The field work has started. Staff has been available to assist our crews out here when they're conducting the field visits and inventory. That will take us through the end of January, first part of February, and completing that document. We have met with USDA as part of this process to look at potential funding for sewer and water replacement. Some of the components I'm gonna talk about here are the USDA application requirements to be able to qualify for land loan grant combination to replace sewer and water. So after the asset management plan is complete, the first item, or second item that we're going to be presenting to council in February is this idea of a preliminary engineering report. So the asset management plan, again, begins to identify all of your infrastructure, developing the systems itself. The preliminary engineering report is the next step that's required by USDA to identify the options, the requirements are set forth by USDA. We look at options for replacing, not only water distribution, but storage, in case of sewer, lift stations, that sort of thing. And then we begin to provide recommendations of what is the preferred alternatives. Again, these are all outlined in the USDA guidelines. And the PER is a component, it's an element that must be submitted as part of the USDA application to apply for loan grant for infrastructure replacement. The duration of the PER, you see there, assuming that it comes to council in mid-February. It gets approved. That effort would carry us through April, the PER draft. We're suggesting that that document be submitted to both NMD and USDA. Those are two very different agencies, one, of course, being the state, the other being federal. The reason for that is that we don't need NMD's approval to get USDA funding. However, we are probably sure bet that the need of replacement is gonna exceed what you can get from USDA in terms of funding. So we wanna make sure that you position yourself for other funding sources in the future. So we allot ourselves the month of May for review of the draft PER. And look at getting that done at the end of June of 2019. So now we're mid-year, 2019, through this process. You can see down at the bottom, we have in blue USDA water application. So you can see how it started in February, and it starts to be parallel to some other activities on top, and it will go through December. Why? Again, just keep in mind that PER is one component of the application process, right? So that's what the blue represents. PER is part of the application process. So the PER is finalized in June. Then we're looking at moving towards the environmental document. That is the second document, second component, that is required by the USDA application. That would be brought to council, essentially at the end of July, first part of August. And then you can see that from July through December, we've given ourselves six months for the environmental assessment. Again, this is, this is a draft schedule. We call it a draft schedule. Why is that? Because at this point in time, we don't know what area we'll be working in for sewer and water. For example, if you're in an area near the Blue, well, the environmental effort is much larger, right? Because now you're dealing with some contaminated groundwater and soils that would be a little more effort from the environmental perspective. So, but the six months is a pretty good schedule. And you can see that, based on this schedule, we would essentially be looking at about a 12-month process in 2019. What's important about the PER and the environmental assessment? So we said several times now that that's part of the USDA application. USDA will reimburse the city up to $30,000 for each one of those. The difference, the delta, anything above and beyond that cost is the city's responsibilities. So for example, we talked about the environmental effort, right? We don't know what the area that we're going to be covering, of course, as the area gets larger. That cost will probably go up. So just bear that in mind, that that's sort of what's driving costs, and at this point, it's too premature to tell, because we just don't know. So based on the completion date of the environmental assessment being completed and approved by the compliance officer to the USDA, then essentially that completes the application. You start your loan component, completion of the loan component, the loan closing at that point. And then we're looking at essentially coming back, and at the same time, at the same time, back up a little bit, right underneath the USDA water application. The 2020 schedule would kick into preliminary final design and construction. So the green on the lower portion, planning and design, assuming everything gets closed in December, you've got your loan grant, got the agreement in place, you really are looking at roughly eight months. Again, that's probably a pretty reasonable schedule. I would compare it to TRC, what we're working right now. In the case of TRC, their USDA application, very similar utilities. They're about $9 million in construction estimate right now. And that's just based on what I'm talking to staff and the number of water breaks you're having. You know, the AC line you have, I know you have a lot of petrified clay when it comes to sewers, so you're probably looking at something similar, Mayor. But expectivation at this point, I really don't know about.
And what would the payment be on that?
On the USDA loan, when we get the real number, then we'll work with USDA staff to be able to calculate those numbers over whatever the term period is. We don't know at this point. And again, remember that it's going to be minimums 45% grant, but because of the low to moderate income levels, you can get up to 75%, grant and 25% lower. So there's a lot of variables that still have to come into play that need to be ironed out before we can get to the actual numbers. Okay. So with the eighth-month schedule in design kicking into August of 2020, you're really looking at finally having a package out to bid, whatever that package is. It may be $3 million, maybe $10 million, we don't know at this point, right? You're looking at having something ready to go out to bid in late fall, September, October of 2020. So that's a long timeline, right? I mean, that's, but it's a very reasonable timeline when it comes to this. I mean, that's, but it's a very reasonable timeline when it comes to this type of funding in the process that we have to go through. And then construction, if we start getting into late September, October, probably at that point, what we recommend to council is that you bid it during the winter and not actually start construction until late March of 2021. And depending on the scale of the project, it can be six months, 12 months. So case in point, your first phase of whatever that infrastructure ends up being, you end up really finishing December of 2021, so three years from today. So that's the overall timeline. I wanted to set the stage and talk about the USDA process. There's going to be more information that will come to council as we learn more, as we get through the process. But this schedule is important because the next item after us is going to be, you remember the discussion about the GeoBond? So one of the reasons we thought that the GeoBond would be a good item to talk about is because USDA pays for sewer and water, and we typically by engineering standard don't pay for more than 1 foot wide trench. And so if you do a wide line, you know, three to four feet is about the average clip of a trench. And I'm sure the city would like to see the streets put back in its full condition. And so part of how do we get to the funding is, well, let's look at other options. And so I've asked Linda, who presented, if you recall, a couple meetings ago, a couple months ago, about the general obligation bond, to be here tonight, she'll be presenting her engagement. But I wanted to make sure, we presented this, set the stage, kind of reminded everybody, why are we talking about USDA and why are we talking about GeoBond? So I'm going to pause there and see if there's any other questions.
Questions? Anybody out there got questions? Next.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Welcome back.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you allowing me to speak before you again. My name is Linda Mulindres, as Mario said, and I am bond counsel for several municipalities, counties, schools, and districts. I'm from New Mexico, graduated from the University of New Mexico undergrad, and went to NYU for law school. After working for seven years in New York, I came back to New Mexico and joined my family law firm. So Mulindres and Mulindres is a boutique family law firm. We, it's my two brothers, my sister-in-law, and we have a paralegal and another attorney. We came back to New Mexico after getting our education in the hope of creating a better New Mexico. And I'm very excited to be in front of you because I know that that's what your goal is as well, in looking at infrastructure that needs to be fixed and to improve your city. So just to give you a little bit more background, I know that you have my engagement letter, and the legal fees are encompassed in the bond proceeds. So I would not be charging an hourly fee. I would come to all of the meetings, I would draft the ordinances, the closing documents, and make sure that the publications for notice are all done. And then if our, once we either go to NMFA or if we were to go out to a bank, then we would get to the closing. It usually takes between, you know, 60 and 90 days when we start the process. And that would be when I would get paid, is when you all get paid.
Questions?
So the...
Questions on that? Go ahead. None?
Okay. So my firm has a minimum for bond counsel fees and for disclosure counsel services, and that is also in there. But just so you understand, these deals can last between 10 and 20 years. And so what I would also provide from my firm is a bound transcript and a CD copy so that if there's any turnover for council or mayor within that 10 to 20-year period, not only if, you know, you all and I weren't still here, we would know exactly what the project was, exactly what those proceeds were spent on, and exactly what the debt service schedule was. And that would be for, in perpetuity, as new council and new mayors are come along in the next 20 years. So that's just another, another service that my firm provides. I think that's everything. If there's any other questions regarding my letter, there's some just boilerplate language in my fees engagement letter, which obviously I believe that under what your bonding capacity is, which is what LaLe Danny from Hilltop Securities had discussed, I don't think that that is going to make that much of a difference. But just so you know, those are the minimums that my firm charges. And when it comes to disclosure counsel, if we were to go out and either do a public sale and do direct, or a direct purchase with a bank, there may be a necessity for disclosure counsel. If we go through NMFA, they usually don't have the necessary requirement for disclosure counsel for that additional legal opinion. But my firm does provide that if that's necessary, so.
Now, any questions? Anybody out there got a question about the GeoBond? Donald? Sure? Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I look forward to working with you and partnering with you to make these infrastructure changes.
Mario, is this something we need to approve tonight?
Yes, thank you for asking, just manager, mayor, and council. Yeah, so the idea is to, I thought it's tonight, to get them on board. And again, they're probably going to be working well over a year before they get paid. Right now, the schedule, and I had to make an assumption, I didn't know if we were opting in or out. This is opting out, right, Linda? This is opting out, which would mean you go to the voters in March for 2020? So you can see, this whole process just really takes time and patience. But you've got to start at some point, right? If we're going to replace the infrastructure that's under significant distress, yes, it would be an action item for tonight.
And is there something in January we need to file if we're going to do this?
So depending on what you have decided regarding opting in or out, that has to be decided before January 30th of next year. For my services, depending on that, we can always do a special election, and I didn't mention that. My firm also would provide all of the services to make sure that your election process goes smoothly and to do publications and things like that for the election process. Again, because it's a GeoBond...
We don't want to do a special election.
Right, so if you don't do...
Put on a regular election, that way we get a better turnout.
Right, absolutely. I totally agree with that. But that timing for the election would then make the timing for when we publish and when we do the election proclamation and all of those things. So that information would, you would need to decide. If you're, one, if you're going to opt in, you have the November 2019. If you opt out, you have the March. And that's when that timing would start triggering. Again, because it's a GeoBond, you would need voter approval. It sounds as if that this is a very big need and that you will get voter approval. But that being said, that would all be encompassed in our fees going forward. So it wouldn't be until the end of the deal when we close, when my fees would then come out of the bond proceeds.
You said, excuse me, you said you're going to be here in all the meetings? Or we need you here, whatever you...
Yes.
You said you've got a minimum here, plus cost, plus the cost.
So the costs usually are, if I have to stay the night, you would probably pay for a hotel.
Everybody charges for traveling and...
So I will, I will let you know that I have not once charged my cost to any of my clients, although we say that, and I will let you know, but I don't...
Mario, he stays at the Holiday Inn and charges you the... I don't understand. I'm just questioning that cost.
Yes.
I understand the groceries.
Thank you.
You do have anything here that we pay for an airplane flight and a car and...
Who is that guy? Ordinance. We're going to take action, get rid of him.
Ordinance. That's the truth. We do, we pay for an airplane flight every time they come from Utah. We pay for a car, we pay for a hotel. Something to look at.
That's what I said, something to look at. It wasn't like she said, honest contract that we're signing with them, if we get bullied out of the jaws after the elections or whatever, we're not here, he's going to continue with the other guy, see? So that's what happened probably the other eight, nine years and whatever. But that's something to look at.
Well, you have a contract, you kind of, the next people to come in are going to have to abide by the contract.
That's what we think.
And that, you know, that just goes with the contract, that's all there is to it.
That's right.
Well, the question here is, do you guys want to do the GeoBond funding now? Do you guys want to move forward with the GeoBond funding?
If we don't, it's going to be longer than more.
Well, the point, my point being is, you just got to think about the dollars, guys. The money. I mean, when we're talking 9 million, our match is going to be almost $2 million. Okay? I mean, that's my concern right there, guys, is you got to stop to think about, we don't want to leave the way the county left. Okay? Period.
But we don't want to be...
No, we've got to do something. But I mean, just, all I'm saying is, think about the money. Now, Donald, go ahead, you raised your hand, stand up. That's what you got to say, man.
All I was going to say, I know this is, actually, it's a little overwhelming for me, all this information, but I mean, we've got to address it. We have a water infrastructure issue. And I, I'm new to the city, I've only been here a little over a year, and I've noticed the impact, I mean, the seriousness of it.
My point being here is when we do this, and we might as well discuss this right now tonight too, what project are we looking at, guys? Where are we looking at fixing?
The asset plan will tell us.
Yes, the asset plan will tell us all that good stuff there, right? But Mr. Siemens helped too, right?
That's correct. And so what will happen is, we're going to have very many more meetings. I mean, we're going to come back and present the results of the asset management plan, which is then going to lead towards the recommendations of a PER. We've already done just a gut check, evaluation.
The PER is preliminary engineering report.
Preliminary engineering report, I'm sorry.
Everybody out there understands what a PER is, okay? Go ahead.
And our sort of first cut at the city, we've got six areas. We're going to validate that. That's why we're going through the exercises. And this council has a lot of room for changes because we're going to be bringing what is our first recommended phase, what is the cost. If that cost, you know, if it is 9 million, you may want to pare it down to 3 million, right? We haven't made any decisions on that yet.
Here's where I'm at. I'm behind this. I'm for this. We just need to watch the money. Period. I'm for this all the way. I'm for the GeoBond, I'm for Siemens, because this is the only way we're going to address anything that we... Just catch one piece, just like Mr. Juan Rahaba out there. We catch it, then we catch the next piece. We did the whole damn street of Johnson, 10 feet at a time. And it cost us a godly amount of money. If we'd have done the whole damn street, it'd have been a lot cheaper. So I'm behind this all the way. All I'm saying is, we need to watch what we're doing. We can't go broke doing this, guys. Okay? But I am behind this. Okay? Yes.
And I'm behind it because nothing's been done here in a year.
Nothing's been done since...
If we're going to move on this, we need to move on it now and not afterward. 100%, because our city needs fixing.
So let's go ahead on the USDA funding. I'll entertain a motion to go ahead and instruct Mario and them to move forward with it. And on the GeoBond, to instruct Mulindres and Mulindres to move forward with it. And then we'll get to the other one down here at 7 and 8 when we get to Mr. Siemens. So on number four, a motion.
I make a motion to approve. What was any comments?
To go after the funding for USDA. Second, Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Voskas, Council Palia. The next one, the GeoBond. I'll entertain a motion to go after, to approve Mulindres and Mulindres to move on the GeoBond at this time.
I make a motion.
Second, Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Voskas, Council Palia. Cool, thank you, guys. Amending ordinance number five, Donald? This is for...
Jefferson and Washington.
Around the school.
Yes.
Okay.
So for Phase One, the city was awarded a loan of $760,000 two years ago to address the flooding at Jefferson and Washington. Anyway, after we've done the studies and the surveying and all that good information, to complete Phase One, which is improvements on Jefferson and a detention pond behind Central Baptist Church, I can't remember the church's name, and then a drain at the end of Smith Street. In other words, that man-made oil right there between Smith and Jefferson would be gone, and it would drain into the detention pond, which from the detention pond, it would go into the Lobo Canyon. Yeah. So anyway, this is to increase the loan because in order to complete Phase One, it's 1.6 million. 1.6 and some change. We're going for 2 million, just in case any change orders. That's what I was advised by the NMFA to go a little over. So we're going 2 million, but we won't use the whole 2 million. Well, I better... We shouldn't use the whole 2 million, it should stay at about the 1.65, something like that. This is just increasing the loan from 760 to 2 million.
I'll entertain a motion to approve amending ordinance 181232. It's amending ordinance 171224.
I make a motion.
Second. Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Voskas, Council Palia.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're still up for Tierra Properties, aren't you?
Oh, yeah.
I'll sit down, bro. Stay there.
Same thing as last month. This is, last month was for Second Street, this one is for First Street. Same issue. However, there's more properties, and this is for Phase Two and Three. From Washington to Roosevelt, there's 17 temporary construction permits. And because it's a DOT road, we have to go through the whole property acquisition process as required by the federal and state agencies.
Question?
Okay, on this Tierra, are you asking all the businesses there? Telling all the business what's going on?
Yes.
Everybody?
Yes, I'm actually going to go, it's supposed to slow down here in the next couple of weeks during the holidays. I'm actually going to go hand-deliver to every property on First and Second Street because we're having a public meeting on January 10th on these projects, and I'm going to go hand-deliver them, a flyer and...
Anything else? I'll entertain a motion for the First Street property acquisition, Tierra Island.
I make a motion.
There's your motion, second, Manny, Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thanks.
Okay, now these next two here, the ordinance and the one are the ones that we just had a meeting on. Thank you, Mario.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas, guys, see you.
I'll come back back in a minute.
Mario didn't even talk, he kept him in his place. Okay, here we go. Order number 181233, it's for the old zone, for the area of gates, for Siemens. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion.
Second.
I second.
Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Voskas, Council Palia.
Yes.
The next one, the loan agreement, the PPRF 4816 loan agreement. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion.
Second. Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Voskas, Council Palia.
Yes.
Cool. Resolutions 181623, authorizing the execution of construction by Siemens.
I have some language I'd like first to insert in that. On the first page, under the underlying section, says the City of France wishes to enter into a construction agreement which is strictly contingent upon reaching a satisfactory lending agreement with New Mexico Finance Authority. I believe we need to add "and" New Mexico Energy Department certification of the full project. So we want to make sure all that's in place before this, we follow through on this agreement.
I'll make a motion, or I'll entertain a motion with that change to the verbiage.
I make a motion with the changes.
Second.
And second.
Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Voskas, Council Palia. Great. Chief! Mayor! I love what you did to my sign over there, man. Well, she's all the way in the back. Thank you very much, I already told her. She's in charge of the sign. I need to say yea or nay. It was, that's what we were looking for, man. Thank you very much. Well, Mayor, councilors, city manager staff, and audience, I'm Robert Hayes, I'm the fire chief. Few things tonight I want to get addressed. Number 10 is the fire engine repair. We had a fire up on Lobo Canyon at the beginning of November and had a catastrophic engine failure on one of my fire engines. So took it in, got it worked on.
So took it in, got it worked on, and it's gonna cost quite a few dollars to get it fixed. You have a litter in front of you, went out for, uh, three requests, one from Albuquerque, was submitted for twenty-five eight eleven, one for Seaman Mechanical, which is in Milan, for twenty-seven oh twenty-nine. And I've opted to go with the one in Milan, because if they have a warranty issue, I can just run over and get it taken care of. It's only a twelve hundred dollar difference, but I have that option. So I would ask if you would approve that, that repair on Engine Tree.
So is that coming out of your fire protection?
Yes, ma'am, it does.
That coffee, Jim.
I'm sorry.
Fire costs, I mean.
Time and energy.
I make a motion to approve it. For twenty-seven thousand and twenty-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents, is that the one you're targeting?
That's it.
Does that include tax?
Yes, sir.
Okay, second.
I second.
Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Voskas, yes. Council Palia.
Yes.
Next one.
Thank you. Uh, a few months ago, we want you to approve the ability for us to borrow some money from the F A, and we were successful, and they closed on December seventh. Backing up a little bit, in twenty fifteen, I went out for monies for just such projects, and I was able to garner an additional eighty-seven thousand for the department on top of what we already get for fire protection. And those funds, uh, I wanted earmarked for such projects. The first one on here is a new fire engine. It will replace a nineteen ninety-nine GMC that is on her last leg. And, uh, there is a, uh, state contract dealt with Artesia, which is a, a New Mexico company. Uh, the sum is gonna be two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars, for twenty nineteen, twelve hundred fifty G P M, one thousand gallon tank, four-door fire engine.
Brand spanking.
Brand spanking.
So, Robert?
Yes, ma'am.
With refresh our memory, what was the loan amount that we got?
Three hundred and sixty-five thousand.
So, before we approve all of these others, um, all of your items on here, the next three, are they all coming out of the loan?
Yes, ma'am.
And we're not having to contribute anything out of any other fund?
Yes.
What are you gonna do with the other one, you gonna leave it here, or...?
She goes to the shop, the other three went earlier in my career, they were sold off.
Who do you sell them to?
Whoever the highest bidder did meet up during our auction. Not very many other entities want old fire engines, because they just inherit old problems.
Brand-new fire engines.
But they all have, you know, brand-new trucks, more than I do. They have another funding source through the Fire Chiefs Association, which aided them over the past fifteen years to buy new fire trucks.
I'll entertain a motion to buy this fire truck, the cost is two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars.
I make a motion. This is...
Second.
I second.
Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Voskas, Council Palia.
Thank you, uh, command unit is just simply a fire truck, it is also on a state contract. Don Charles was the, uh, the best bidder at this time, two hundred and nineteen F one fifty, four-door, and it's twenty thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars. It's about six thousand under what I intended to buy.
So what will it be used for?
It'll be my third sergeant's vehicle.
I thought they already had one.
He has the, the little S U V, which is a training unit that I loaned out for guys to go to the different training aspects all over town. It's not a pickup, it's a, an S U V. Only the two sergeants have S U Vs, I mean, have pickups, I'm sorry.
Questions? Entertained a motion, twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars. Go ahead. What do you mean, a fire command unit, then you're gonna use commercial rescue?
That's, that'd be the next one, a fire command unit, that's where you have to call them, and you can't just call them a pickup at the State Fire Marshal's office. I don't know why.
They, they use it for...
Two, two kinds of scenes to be available to the department twenty-four seven. It's the sergeant's vehicle, the, the, the command staff.
As you said, fire command, and they use commercials for rescue.
That's next, yeah, I'll be coming.
I know it's next, but I was just getting the, the explanation of why.
Sure.
Okay, twenty-eight thousand, I would have thirty-six for the pickup on number twelve.
I make a motion to approve it.
Second.
I second.
Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Voskas, Council Palia.
Yes.
Last one.
Last one. We have a two thousand and eight rescue vehicle that is coming apart. We put it together over time, and it's just not designed for what it has ended up being. So I went out for, uh, to look for a commercially-used one. Uh, the two thousand and eleven that is on here is from a company called Brindley Mountain, where I bought two other vehicles, the latter especially. And, uh, it's a good deal for ninety-five thousand, comes with a warranty, and, uh, they will deliver it, and it also comes out of the funding for the three hundred and sixty-five thousand we borrowed.
For this, please, sir.
Brindley Mountain is in, uh, Alabama.
I have, I have a question on this one.
Sure.
This one is the two thousand and eleven, and the mileage is, and this is like, almost two thousand and nineteen, and this says it has a mileage of eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-six miles?
Yes.
Well, has it been sitting?
No.
What?
They're the, uh, the, they bought it from another agency, like, like this company does, and it, and they don't have a lot, they do not have a lot of rescue, but, uh, they needed to buy another one, and they sold those to Brindley, and I'd like to pick up one. I'm looking for something with very low miles, that's why it comes with a warranty.
Brindley is low mileage?
Yes, yes.
So I was just...
I bought my, I bought my GMC, it's a two thousand and nine, and I bought it four years ago, and it had twenty-five thousand miles. And that's one of the reasons I jumped on it, was because of the low mileage, I jumped on it with a bolt piece quickly as I could.
The other one that they quoted, it was two thousand and three, with forty thousand miles on it, they didn't want that one.
And now, explain this, is this like that one big truck we had with the big four-door?
The white one with all the cabinets on it? Yes, that's to replace down.
That's what this one is, okay.
They've gone down the road, and the doors have opened up, when we, when it torches up and goes around a corner, and that's not good for stuff to fly out on the road.
So, how will that be used, if your crew is driving the ambulance and the fire truck?
It depends, it's all situation-dependent. If we have a rescue to go to, we, we take an ambulance and that unit and go to the call. Or if we have a fire and a rescue, I mean, and an ambulance, we take the ambulance and a, and a fire engine. We just, we just make it happen. Or I'll have, I'll have someone, I'll do it like myself tonight. We went to, uh, a vehicle versus two children on bikes on Leech, that's why, that's why I was late. I got on my truck, and I drove to the scene, and then I drove the fire truck to the, to the hospital with my two guys in the bag, caring for the children. I live, I live sixty seconds from the station, and so, you know, it's wild. And they won't be a very good asset, because these doors don't open like normal, they roll up, which is what they're supposed to do.
Council?
I make a motion to approve it.
Ninety-five thousand, though.
Ninety-five thousand, no, probably not, perhaps.
And include shipping? Second.
I second.
Council Reynolds?
Yes, I got something to add, and...
Council Palia?
I appreciate, appreciate this certain thought.
Would you total out the amount of money you're spending on the toll?
Yeah, I total it, yes.
How much was it?
A whole lot, more than the three hundred and sixty-five thousand.
It is?
But, I can order the, the, uh, fire truck today, I will not see it till the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year. I get an additional two hundred and five thousand, and I will hoarse out the, the difference at that time.
You just told me your loan was gonna pay for it all.
And it, and it will pay for the majority of it, I know.
How much are we over?
Twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars. Because that will also come out of the fire funding, just like the cost for the, uh, for repair.
You know, the fire funding is not, you know, we kind of talk about it like it's not our money, it is our money, and it is, it's money given to us by the state to help us operate our fire...
Correct.
...department, and so, it should not be considered not our money, it should be considered our money, because it's to help offset the cost of fire services.
I know what he's doing right now, he's, he's getting all the new equipment to help us fight the fires now. Okay, so without, without the new equipment, we wouldn't have it. But anyway, I understand what you're saying, it's not costing the city any more.
It, 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 they'll, they'll come, yes, it doesn't, that's why I went out and made a funny idea.
Well, yeah.
But what would, if we didn't use, if we didn't use that money now, what would it be used for?
It has to always be used for, for fire services.
There we go, we got it.
At any time. Maybe even use it to, to pay for the two thousand and thirteen ambulance that they have.
Then you're not gonna be asked in the city for twenty-seven thousand dollars to cover costs?
No, ma'am.
As we go down the road?
I always try and keep fifty thousand dollars in reserve in that fund, at all times, for just such an occasion, every year.
Such emergency.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura, you got anything?
We talked about the leaks, what we're gonna do for that. Um, I just wanted to encourage the council, if citizens have concerns, please ask them to come see our staff, you know, if it's a certain department. Encouraging them to come to city council meetings is not helpful. Um, I can't solve issues here in a meeting, I can in my office, and so can our staff. So encourage them to come, and then we'll lead them to do the steps they need to take, so that we can, can handle things efficiently.
Well, I think the council ought to be involved in a lot of these things, Laura. And when a concern sense comes up, we should address it. If they want to address it here at the city council, that's our job, that's what we got elected.
So what did you do to, this evening, to solve the issue with the water line?
That's, uh, what's gonna be done, from what I understand, we need to replace that whole water line from Monroe to, uh, what's the other street?
That wasn't decided here tonight.
No, it wasn't.
That was something our staff decides, as we see and we do this stuff, as we, we see the needs coming out there. So it's, it's much better if people come...
Directly come to the staff. It's just like if, another thing that I was gonna bring up, since you're already running off on it, Manny, let's run off on this. Okay? It's chain of command. Period. If an employee calls you bitching about another frickin' employee, it's not your place to get involved. It's your place to send them to Laura, because all you're doing is circumventing chain of command. And there you're circumventing the law, the...
Well, here, here we go. I'm glad you're on this.
It's the way it is, okay?
It's the way it should be, right?
It's part of charter. And, and that's the way it should be done, and it ain't being done.
Well, here's the other thing, they're afraid to approach you, Laura.
Oh, come on, Manny.
No, 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 let's, let's get that charter right here, right now, I'm, I'm ready for it.
Who's afraid?
Everybody.
Give me a name.
Everybody.
Man, Donald, are you afraid to approach her? How about you, Mark, are you afraid to approach her? Brenda, are you afraid to approach her? Come on, Manny, everybody, that's a line of crap.
No, it's not there.
It is.
I have to, I have to tell you that, when you have a lot of employees that don't wanna come and talk to the city hall, we have a problem.
What you do, it's called circumventing the chain of command, Donald, I mean, uh, Manuel, it's called the charter that you're supposed to be following. Okay? That's, that's the way the problem lies. And when you circumvent the chain of command, you undermine her, you undermine him, you undermine anybody that's in charge.
Well, if they're not doing their job, I am, I'm the emperor's challenge, you're the greatest example.
And, and so what you're doing is you're taking an employee's word that they're not doing their job.
Well, you know what I...
That's what you're doing, Manny.
I can't address things if they're not coming to me, if they're coming to you.
That's right, buddy.
But if, if they're afraid to come to you, Laura, we have a problem.
I don't, I don't believe that.
Well, then Manny, here's what I would suggest you do, get that employee and come with them. Come over here and sit with them, and see if they're, what, what they're so afraid of.
You know what, it would fill this room.
So, Council Voskas, um, it doesn't help when you're attending conferences and you're sitting there bad-mouthing our staff, you're bad-mouthing our street department.
Oh, no, 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 no.
My staff came back from the infrastructure conference, and they overheard that you were talking bad about our street department. Well, they heard about that. So you are, you know, our staff are not perfect, but in public, you need to support them. We criticize in private, we support in public.
Now, let's go, okay, so, I did make the comment, and all, and I'm gonna tell you that I made the comment, that what? I even called you that morning, what are we doing paving our roads in the rain?
Well, our staff had, had planned that all out, and they had it under control. And the rain did not impact the outcome of the paving.
Whatsoever.
You know what it does? Fred, you brought it up, you brought it to me, come on, Fred.
It does, uh, it does if you cannot mix mix on, on wet paving.
Can you mix oil and water together?
No.
No, and we know that, and obviously, it worked out okay. It's really tough, we have to order supplies months in advance, oil and the paving material. And yes, we can cancel at the last minute, but if they're able to pave, they're going to.
That's right.
Um, it's, it's really schedule-driven, and those roads that they paved turned out fine.
And they're really...
They're not perfect, but it had nothing to do with the rain, it had to do with, um, our staff's skill level.
What about Fred?
The workmanship.
Our staff's skills, skill level.
How was the workmanship, Fred? What did the rain have to do with it?
Well, the, the mix got, the color raised, way raised, and you can lay it and move it.
But that didn't happen that day.
No.
But that didn't happen that day.
The issue was...
It had to.
The issue was heating.
Because when you pour hot mix, it's gonna be over three hundred degrees. You have, the temperature's gonna be over forty-five degrees.
C N D won't even pour it, right, Mike, if it, or, Mark, if it's not the right temperature?
Can I approach? Yeah, you betcha, Mark, step up here.
All right. Thank you everyone for your concerns, definitely. So, one of the things we do is we have a temperature gun that's on site, and so as they're giving us the material, we're checking the material for several things, one of those things is temperature. And you are correct, when there is rain, it doesn't mix very well with oil. Fortunately, uh, we, we kept an eye on that, and at one point, it did start to come down. We, we chilled out, we didn't allow the, the, uh, pavement to keep going on, but once that oil...
No, you didn't, no, you did not. I have to challenge you right now, I got pictures, okay?
I remember you were out there.
I was out, you, Beatrix, I'm looking after our money for the city.
Absolutely.
And I don't like waste, so don't tell me that it wasn't raining, there was porn.
So once the oil's applied, and once the material has been ordered, that's it, we're paying for it. So, we could pile it up somewhere, we could go pay, but it's, it's still gonna be wasted, absolutely.
I can understand that, once it becomes, like, then it becomes waste, because we know we're gonna do these roads again, right, Mark?
So, that's correct. If, if we go and we pave a parking lot somewhere, or we go and...
I'm not talking about the parking lot, I'm talking about our streets.
So once that material has been ordered, and it's on site, that's it, it's ours.
So...
So we might as well pave a road.
Yes, I, I, I don't have no problem, that's why I left it alone, but now you're bringing up all kinds of things that it doesn't matter when it rains. Yes, it does. And the other thing is...
You know it matters when it rains, Manny.
Sure.
What I mean is, you are not part of the chain of command.
Well, so the other thing is...
Someone calls you, you need to call Laura. You, you don't get involved in it, dude.
So the other thing is... Who checked the weather report for that, for that day?
I checked the night before, it was a ten percent chance of rain.
How much?
It's like ten to fifteen percent somewhere.
Yeah, the chance of rain was, you know, it, it wasn't reported correctly, I was watching that too, because I was nervous, and it did not show that it was gonna rain, and then when it was raining, I'm like, well, jeez, that was very efficient. But Manny, the, the point I'd like to make is that, don't treat us like we don't care about the city, or we don't care about saving money, we care too. We're gonna make mistakes, and we'll own up to them, but we care, and we're trying. And that's all I can ask of my staff, give me your best, try. Um, my staff are not highly paid, they're gonna make mistakes, I'm gonna make mistakes. Don't, don't expect us not to, be, be compassionate enough to say, okay, you know, we messed that up, let's try better. And we definitely will, we care. I, I care, I care to the umpteenth degree, and I know Mark does, and I know most of our staff do. We've got a few that don't, and hopefully those would be moving on.
We've got a real whole bunch of them, didn't we?
But we do care.
And we're continuing to move that way.
Give, give us the support we need, um, don't feed us up. You're, you're so easy on the nonprofits, but you beat up our staff. You are so hard on me and our city staff, and yet the nonprofits can be doing nothing, and you're just like, let's give them more money. Let's up their pay.
Can I address the workmanship?
That's, that's exactly true, that, that is...
Can I address the workmanship very quickly? I, I agree that the workmanship can absolutely increase, and we're planning several, several different trainings. We're bringing Volvo in, we're also bringing, uh, Pete's Equipment has a certified actor for Jacobs Crew as well as us. And so, we're, we're gonna try, and there's also an, uh, paving and infrastructure conference. We're sending four of our personnel to that, so they can learn some, some more techniques.
You know, you, you guys can hammer me all you want, but I'm doing this for the right purpose, okay? And if we don't keep this under control, we're never gonna have any money. And all this outside spending and stuff like that, we need to control them. So, yes, you can hammer me, I don't have a problem, you guys.
That's what I just got to tell you guys about with the Geo Bonds and all that shit, Manny. I mean, come on, you're not telling us nothing that we don't know here. You got anything to say? Say me? Go for it.
I'd like to wish everyone a wonderful holiday. And, um, you know, this is like the, coming into winter, and maybe we need to start thinking about trimming those trees by the insurance company on Santa Fe, you know?
Our guys did, um, they went down Santa Fe, they went down Santa Fe and they trimmed the ones that were, um, within the sidewalk area. Uh, Manny mentioned they didn't get his, but yours are not covering the sidewalk, that's what they were looking for. Is, are they blocking, uh, traffic from being able to go? We said we weren't gonna trim the top.
Yeah, what about the ones with the signs?
What, what?
The signs, because they're not gonna...
You gotta be able to see the signs, that's what they would do.
I, I thought you guys said we weren't gonna trim the top.
We're not gonna, we're gonna be working at the top, at the, the...
You're not trimming where you see the sign.
You can see the sign.
I thought you guys...
Our guys will go back through that, that's fine.
We don't, we, we'd like to fix this one so we don't see him again.
Thank you.
And break, because I, I purposely drive down and I'm saying, oh, I see the sign, but I see the branches up there. So the branches need to...
Yeah, the ones that block the signs need to be cut.
Yeah, I, I thought when we talked about it, it was that we weren't gonna do the top.
Okay, you need to cut, cut the ones that block the sign.
Counselor, did you say there was another spot also?
Uh, just my trees, they're going into the sign, it's a, a, that's now.
Okay, we'll check, we'll check both those spots.
Thank you.
I only care about the insurance.
You know, where you, that looks nice, I'll patch up this branch.
Yes, sir.
Prove the whole thing like that so you can see, stay far.
You got anything?
I'm, I'm not quite finished.
Okay, go ahead, sorry about that, keep going, you know?
Since I wasn't going to bring it up, but now I am, since everyone's worried about money. Have we thought about, initially, when I, when I ran, I didn't want to be paid, okay? That went down the tubes. Well, the ordinance number three twenty-seven is the one that instituted pay for the mayor and the council. Then that was, that was amended in number eleven sixty-seven that jacked up the price of our services.
The payment.
And that went into effect the first of April of two thousand and seven. I would still, since my time is winding down, I do believe I should have the right of choice. Not wanting to be, to be paid.
Oh, Trump doesn't get paid.
Want, wanting to get paid does not mean I'm nice or anything, it just means I have to pay. I owe a lot of income tax, and I, I do it. And I would like, and I'm not trying to take away money from anybody else, change the words from...
Change the words to where?
Shall to may be paid. Can we do that in two thousand and nineteen?
Yes, we can, we will get it right now, okay?
It just takes us, we don't need anybody.
And if we can't, get it on the next...
I don't care, it's two thousand and nineteen.
You have to advertise it for so long.
Yeah, to get on, get it on, maybe a February.